We always mention under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20 half, the meeting is being recorded. We have to tell people the meeting is being recorded. We're not comfortable with that, but requirements are we can have recorded meetings and we do for the public, but we do have to tell the people present that the meeting is being recorded. In terms of welcome comments, I would just like to congratulate again now Chief of Police, Christopher Dunn. We just had his swearing in ceremony earlier this evening, and a very nice event. Are there any other acknowledgements or admissions? Good to say no? Okay. We were going to honor somebody tonight, a senior citizen, but that will be at the next meeting. So, welcome everybody for being here. And the meeting starts out, we just follow the agenda here. We'll move as quickly as we can to the item that I think most of you are here for, but we'll go along a pace, as they say. So, the first item are three appointments and resignations, and 1A is the request to accept the resignation of Veronica Bullia from the Westport Housing Authority effective April 9th, 2024. We do have a letter in our file that was given to us. Jim, do you have any comments here?
Well, yes, a number of the members, I believe, are going to be resigning as of the April election, so there may not be any active members on that board or that committee unless we get a big group to run for it this coming election.
We currently have an opening already that we posted for, right?
Yeah.
So, this will be our second opening that we know about.
Yes, and the governor's appointment, Mrs. Skrilllet, I believe, is resigning as well, and Mrs. Menard called and said she is resigning as well as of the election.
Is there anything you can look into there for us to give us more background?
I will check. I have a call into the state. This is a state agency. It's not a town committee or a town board per se, so I will see how they want to handle it.
Okay. Well, our work tonight here for this is just to accept the resignation. There's no reason not to. I know Ms. Bullio, and she's been a great supporter. I think she's been on that board for years. I want to say 40 years, I thought. Did I read?
I don't know.
Yeah, so she's certainly...
Motion accepts under letter, please.
Oh, second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. The next item is 1B, the request to appoint Michael Roulod to the cemetery labor 2 position. Jim?
So, Michael's been in the labor position for a number of years. He's been assisting with the foreman position since it's been vacant since June. He's agreed to apply for his hoisting license, so that would bump him up to the labor 2 position. It's only a slight increase in the hourly rate. He does do extra there. He does do some of the spreadsheet work and some of the computer work in addition to the labor job. I'd recommend that he be promoted, I guess, or change to the labor 2 position.
Is that subject to him getting his hoisting license, or is it?
He has six months to apply for his license.
All right, so moved with the stipulation.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further comments? Discussion made?
So, Jim, is it true that they haven't been paying the union dues and they are not in the union over there anymore?
I believe that's the case, but I'm not. It's between them and the union, I don't...
Okay.
It's still a union position, whether they're in the union or not. So, any changes we make, we would still have to negotiate with the union.
Well, I mean, well, you know, we've had the problems, and Highway keeps stepping in with that. I mean, I'd like to make the... Since he's not in union position, maybe he could go into Highway.
It's my understanding that I can't... The position itself is a union position. He's just not paying union dues, so he's not a union member.
Aren't these the guys that brought the union in?
One of the members there that worked previously was, I think, the first to bring in the new union.
Hoisting license, I mean, it's... The Teamsters Union, none of them have... They don't have a truck driving license. They don't have a CDL. They travel from different... I mean, I don't know how we're running the cemetery. I know Highway's stepping in.
It hasn't been easy.
Highway, I mean, we just had a storm. We got 21 miles of road with... per man. I mean, I think these guys in the cemetery should move over to Highway and just let Highway take over the cemetery.
I don't disagree. I did check with town council to see if that's... They're two different unions. The Highway Department has asked me, the cemetery is Teamsters', and town council said because we just... Teamsters just came in and they certified those positions as union positions under Teamsters'. He said it'd be very difficult if...
Did you tell them that they're not paying... They haven't paid dues?
I did not, but I don't think that's part of...
I guess they're not union employees. They didn't pay the dues, and then we're going to keep a union there, and we're going to not... I just don't understand how that works. I'd like to get that a little more clarified. I'm not against giving the upgrade if he's doing all the spreadsheet work, but I think if he was... You know, this would make a little easier transition to fix our problems over there if he was part of Highway, and then, you know, Highway could supervise a little bit better.
We tried for several years to get a DPW in there. It was quite adamantly opposed when we tried to do that. I'm not saying we shouldn't do it. I was supportive of it a number of years ago. I'm supportive of it now, but it's...
I'm not saying we create a DPW. I'm saying we let the Highway's mayor take care of the cemetery.
They could do that now. I think it'd just be the two different unions.
Well, where do we want to go with this? We have this more narrow item tonight. This is a bigger discussion. Did you take that up for a different...
Yeah, I mean, as, you know, as Steve mentioned, it's subject to him getting his hoisting license within six months.
Right.
So, we give him the raise, and then we see where those...
Oh, so what is the pleasure of the committee there?
I think we already moved it.
Move it. Just get a hold of him.
Okay. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. The motion carries. Thank you. Third item under appointments and resignations is C, to request to appoint Steve Souza to the cemetery foreman position. So, Jim?
So, he's been the interim foreman for just about six months. He was foreman previously, and he requested to step down. He's willing to take that position again now. I'd recommend approval.
Okay, question on him. Does he have a hoisting license?
He does not.
Okay.
Well, Jim, in your view, in spite of the... or because of the earlier conversation, is this still a good thing to do at this time?
Yeah, he's been doing the job for six months.
He's already there.
He's there.
To the chair. I mean, how can we say he's been doing the job? Highway's been coming and digging the graves.
Highway hasn't been there for three months.
They've been short-staffed in that department.
Who's been digging the graves?
We've had same union, Teamsters Union, so... What's his name there from the transfer station, has been digging the graves. We tried to get Highway staff to do it, but there was a union issue. They filed a grievance.
Did Chris not go in and dig the graves?
Oh, no, no. Chris has been great over there. I mean, he's dug graves. If, you know, if we can't get somebody else, but the last few months, it's been the transfer station.
All right, I'll move it again. Hopefully, this is going to help straighten out some of the issues.
I'll second. Mr. Chair, so I just want to point out, we're having trouble hiring people with hoisting licenses. We're not paying enough, right? So, even the Highway Department is short-staffed. We've had problems in the transfer station. We've had problems in the cemetery. People with hoisting licenses demand a greater salary than what we're offering. So, that's part of the challenge that we're having, is even when we have the open positions, we can't fill them. So, I agree with you. There is a problem going on here, but I don't know how we get to the bottom of that.
Well, how we get to the bottom of it is we bump up Highway a little bit more and absorb the cemetery and the Highway, and they can be utilized throughout the town.
So, that's negotiations with two different unions that we'd have to go through. So, maybe we should, if they're on the table.
I just don't understand how we can end this. These people who brought the union into town, a separate union, are not paying dues, and that's a union position. I think we've got some other legal issues going on right here. Plus, I mean, Teamsters, I mean, aren't those guys truckers? I mean...
Teamsters is represented by town hall, the town hall employee.
I understand, but the Teamsters Union, so now we got employees there that are Teamsters that don't even have CDLs. I just...
We have people in this building that work here in the Teamsters.
It's just confusing to me.
Yeah.
You know what I mean? So, I mean, I don't know. And so, now we have these foremen that don't have the license. I mean, when nobody's around watching them, I mean, what are they, are they running the equipment?
He's not running equipment.
I mean, I've been watching some type since I've been on the planning board, and I just... We need to do something.
Yeah, there are bigger issues here, no question. Now, to the question of paying our people properly, we are aware that the Personnel Board has... It was approved at town meeting, an article to do a survey. Are we far away from those answers?
We had a meeting with them last week, introductory meeting. We're getting them information. They feel within three months they will have it completed, as long as we can keep up the pace with them.
Okay. Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay. Number two, action items. There are a number of them. Request from Jim, Town Administrator to dispose of surplus property valued at less than $5,000, 85 broken desks and chairs, broken desks, and the fire department light fixtures. This is one of your things you have to do near this job, right?
We actually do have a policy that has a getting rid of surplus material, surplus supplies, so that's why the Board of Selectment does have to vote on it. If it's under 5,000, the Town Administrator has discretion as to how it can be disposed of, but the Board still has to approve.
So...
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. The next item is a request from Beverly Bish, the Council on Aging Director, to approve her education incentive. I believe this is according to the program, and she did do the required works. Do you have any comments on that?
No, I'd recommend approval. It's part of her contract. It's consistent with the town personnel bylaws.
So...
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. The motion carries. Thank you. 2C is request to approve the 2023 Alcohol Beverage Control Commission Annual Report. Tell us about that.
It's just a one-page report that lists the number of licenses that we have here in town in each category. Has to be sent up on an annual basis, so I'd recommend approval.
What is the pleasure of the committee?
I'll move it again.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. That motion also carries. Request, D, this is request to approve the deputy police chief job description. The job description is in the package, and after favorable review by the Board of Selectment, Select Board, it would go to the Personnel Board, and I think that meeting is this week. The police chief, the newly sworn-in police chief, Dunn, he asked if he needed... We needed his presence here tonight for this assignment. I didn't think so. He has obviously other urgencies this evening as part of his swearing in ceremony, so I think we can go without that. But if you're wondering why he wasn't here, we did talk about it. So, what is... Jim, any comments?
The description hadn't been updated in a long time. They added some educational training experiences. The description itself is... conforms to the overall policies that are sent out for the local police organizations here in Massachusetts.
And we had police reform, the so-called Post Bill a couple of years ago, so that... I think that lines up with that from what I understand, which is timely.
Okay, I'll move it.
I'll second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. The motion carries. Thank you. E is request for Matt Armando, the Board of Health Director, to approve the education incentive for Linda Pierce, who is the town nurse. Jim?
Yeah, this is similar to the previous one for the Council on Aging Director. She qualifies for educational incentive benefit in accordance with the town bylaws, personnel bylaws. Be an associate degree, which would be $625 additional, as listed in the personnel bylaws. So, I'd recommend approval.
So...
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. F, request to approve contract extension for Rochester Bituminous Products Incorporated. Jim?
So, this is a contract for the Chapter 90 work here in town that the Highway Department oversees. The contract had an end date of November 30th, and they've requested an extension till December 24th of 2023.
And that checks out, in your view?
Yes. This is fairly standard. A lot of these contracts tend to extend a little bit beyond their due date.
Okay, so...
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. The motion carries unanimously. Thank you. G is request from Chris Leonard, Director of Marine Services in the Shellfish Advisory Committee, to reduce... commercial, it's just...
You hook them?
It says hat, but anyway, the commercial catch limit of oysters from three town baskets per day to two town baskets per day. Jim, by the way, I don't think Mr. Leonard's here tonight, but that's okay. So, if you could give us the background of this.
The paperwork.
Is a town basket...
I'm here from the Shellfish Advisory Board.
Oh, excellent.
Okay.
You have to go to a microphone, though.
Well, yeah. Thank you for being here.
Okay. Chris is on vacation this week, so I got to vote him to come in. So, this seems, off the Hicks Bridge, there's an oyster bed. I don't know if you're all familiar with that. And last year, it's a natural oyster bed, so once it's gone, it's gone. And last year, to get your limit, would take about maybe two and a half, three hours. This year it's taken about five hours, you know, for one person to get their two baskets. So, it seems to be getting depleted. And at one time, south of Hicks Bridge, there was quite a few oyster beds, and right now, they've disappeared. I don't know if it's from overfishing or just the changes in the river. So, that's the message from Chris.
I mean, I bought in that scum hole south of the Hicks Bridge.
Well, it's too deep, too tall. That's...
Too tall.
They could do diving, right? Yeah, I think they've been diving for this. Yeah, it's... So, that's the reason why the Shellfish Advisory Board wanted to cut it down from three baskets to two baskets. So, I see we have a lot of oyster men out there. If you want to give your opinion, Ronald Savari.
Okay, if you don't... Thank you, sir. And this gentleman wants us to speak, just go there and give us your name. We all know who you are, but not everyone.
The stand-up one.
Well, you don't want to...
Don't you sit up? John Scammels, 75 Hillcrest Acres, Westport, Mass. Some of you know me. I've been an oyster, a shell fisherman in Westport for at least 40 years. I've seen that particular oyster bed that Ronald had referred to actually grow in size from a point where five years ago, there was hardly maybe 5% or 3% of the oysters there that were of market size. Last year, a substantial amount of those oysters became of size, and it was worth the amount of time the commercial shell fishermen took to take three baskets of those oysters to market and make a little money. This year, it's even better. This year, I think, at least 60% of the oysters that we get in one rake are marketable size, and it does take a little longer. There are a lot of small ones, but I don't believe that the biomass is being affected by the amount of fishing that's going on. I do not think it's being overfished, and I do have a marine biology background to substantiate that. There are other oyster beds, like Ronald said, south of the bridge, that I don't think are endangered, that are endangered, you know, with fish either. To change from three baskets, and I was at the cut at first. When I first heard about them going from three baskets to two baskets, I thought about it, and I said, well, I'm getting older. It's taking me a little longer to get three baskets. Maybe that's the right thing to do. But then I started thinking, if they're of size now, that they're just about good for a price at the market, next year they're going to be bigger. The bigger they are, the less amount of oysters that you're going to get in a basket. The reduction of oysters per basket is going to bring the price down for the fishermen. So, if we go to three... If we go from three baskets to two baskets this year, fine. Next year, we go... We have two baskets, and the oysters are larger size. We're not going to make them enough money to really make it substantial to pay for the boat, the expenses, the licenses, everything. So, I think from going from three baskets to two baskets should be... I recommend that the Selectmen abstain from voting on this tonight until enough fishermen get to give their opinion at a Shellfish Advisory Board. I believe that the last Shellfish Advisory Board, the parking lot at the town hall was being redone, so some of the fishermen, I believe, that wanted to attend that Shellfish Advisory Board didn't realize that the meeting was going on because there was nobody in the parking lot. So, I noticed there were a number of people here tonight that probably won't voice the same opinion that I do. So, I recommend that you abstain from approving that tonight until another discussion is... happens in the future with more shell fishermen giving their opinion at an advisory board meeting at a later date.
Thank you.
Any other questions? You go with the questions.
I agree with you.
Okay.
I know a little bit about it. I know that the watershed dove the scum...
I was part of that program, yeah.
Okay, so it was my son-in-law that dove it.
Oh, really?
So...
I helped him out.
So, he told me what was in the scum hole. So, basically, the terminology, I mean, I guess, they're of good size for spat. So, they're helping what's in the scum hole that you guys can't go after is making the shell fishing better, as far as the...
Well, I think we're talking about two different things. I think there was a discussion and something was on the table about removing the debris that was left when they fixed Hicks Bridge.
Put it in the scum hole.
That was affecting the reproduction of the oysters north of the bridge. That's what that project was...
Well, this one might be a different one they weren't involved in. So, they were looking at for the dredging, and one of the options, they were saying the cheapest alternative was to take the debris and put it in that scum hole.
Right, right.
So, they dove the scum hole, the sea life was in the scum hole.
Yeah.
So, there's a breeding ground down there of oysters, and that's what's kind of... I'm sure that's why the oysters are doing better. I mean...
I don't. I don't believe that, but that's...
All the more reason to go to a Shellfish meeting.
I've watched oyster and colar populations going waves, and I think right now, and I don't want to make this, you know, like a... I don't want to invite a ton of more commercial fishermen.
Right, no, no.
Because I think that that's one of the reasons why I think they wanted to go from three to two, is because we're seeing more people doing it now. And... But the thing with north of the bridge, it's only a four-month seasonal area. It closes... It opens in December typically and closes in April. North of Cadence Cove is seasonal, so you only have four months to actually oyster in that area, and then you have rain that closes it for five days. If it rains more than two inches, then you have... You have to have the state to come back to test the water. So, it's closed quite a bit at the time. And then, you also have ice in the winter time. You can't get out of it. So, I think the overfishing part of it is a little bit exaggerated, and so I just recommend that we stay at three in October.
Mr. Chair, can we find out when the next meeting is for the Shellfish Advisory?
I was going to ask the gentleman who spoke earlier if he would be able to come back.
Well, Chris is on vacation for three weeks, so it'll be a little bit of time.
Does that pose any problem in your view?
Well, if Chris Leonard's not there?
Well, more importantly, the recommendation that's being made by this gentleman to postpone action tonight until we get further input from the Shellfish Committee.
The opportunity.
From the shell fishermen.
Shell fishermen.
More shell fishermen. Well, it's everybody's got their own opinion right now, so, like I said, south of Hicks Bridge, there's hardly any more oysters. Whatever caused that, we don't know, overfishing or change in the river. And I don't agree with him that the oysters are bigger this year than they were last year, so, you know, it's... Everybody has their own opinion, but... Yeah, I think everybody has their opinion, but there's no really marine biological science behind it. There's been no surveys to say there's this amount of biomass here and there's not as much over here. It's just that, you know, somebody's saying, well, I'm not that catching as many as I did last year. Well, you might not be fishing as well as you did last year. Your equipment might not be as good. Some people are saying there's a lot more than there was last year. There's no really science survey behind it stating that this is exactly what's happening. The other thing is the oysters in that area take about five years to mature. You agree with that? They definitely... They definitely... Right now, they're definitely real slow. Most of them are under three inches, which is the legal limit.
When's the next meeting?
Not real.
Do you have any dates in front of you?
We have a question here. Go ahead.
No, I was just asking for a date, like a month from now.
Does this affect this season?
Yeah, Chris wanted it to be affected today.
And we're in the middle of the fishing season, right?
Yeah.
I mean, I think maybe you should have, before the season started, come in and try to do this instead of in the middle of the fishing season.
Yeah, I agree.
I mean, so I think we should table it.
It's funny that we disagree. Ronnie, Ronald and I used to shell fish when we were 10 years... Probably like five years old. Together in the same...
So, we're in the middle of the season now. Let's get them out there and monitor what's going on, you know, I mean...
I know. I think that's why I said you should postpone that decision.
I would make a motion to...
Yeah, we don't have a calendar here. I'll agree. We postponed it to a future date after the meeting. That's what you're saying, right?
But I'm not the only shell fisherman here that's playing the shell fish.
No, that's fine. I think that's what they're all going to say, is ask to postpone it again.
I don't know.
Well, let me ask this. Thank you for those comments. Does anybody else wish to speak to this issue? Feel free to do so.
February 5th, the next, a month from now, meeting is February 5th.
Is that through the chair? Is that after your next meeting?
Oh, wait, maybe. Wait, I take that back. That might be wrong.
We can work it out with Chris Leonard, see if it's all set.
Okay, then what is the action being recommended here?
Motion's been made and seconded to wait until the shell fishermen have that opportunity to attend the committee meeting and we'll bring it back up again.
So, to not take action on this tonight?
Right.
Okay.
Chris still wants to push it after the meeting. We'll take it up again, but I personally agree with Manny on that. We're not going to do it mid-season when people are depending on it. That's my own opinion.
Motion made and seconded. Further discussion?
And sorry, the motion is to delay making a decision on this, or to decline? What is the motion?
That we delay until the... We don't have a date certain, so I was saying until they have an opportunity to go to a Shellfish meeting.
Okay.
Probably going to be at least a month. He said three weeks, so... I didn't make a date positive because we don't have it in front of us. So, right now, we're just postponing that decision.
Okay.
And the rest of the committee, any comments?
No, I'm fine with that.
Any comments from the public on this before we finish?
The same thing with the week thing.
Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay, that'll be the course of action. Thank you, gentlemen, for your comments.
Mr. Chair, Paula, could you just put the calendar, like, in a higher level folder? I can't find it. I have the other year meeting dates in here, but not the 2024.
Yeah, I think mine was showing up in the folder. I can see it quick here. Might be 23.
Okay.
Oh, it's on the left.
Got that? All right. The next items, items are discussions, and the first one is 3A, the East Beach Storm Damage and all that goes with that, and so on and so forth. So, I would ask, Jim could comment? I know Manny, you had... You wanted to make some comments, and you asked Mr. Leach to appear, as he's out there. You can feel free to join us as well, but I'll start with Jim, if you have anything to say.
Now, I believe, members always ask to put it on the agenda. There was a storm there a couple of weeks ago. They did a number on the road, a number on the properties on the south side of East Beach. Carried material across the road onto the properties on the north. It was a pretty severe storm, the one that was not a tropical storm or hurricane. Did quite a bit of damage along the East Beach area. Sean had given me some pictures, which I'm trying to get up on the screen, but...
Yeah, I saw them in the package. They were...
Yeah, do you have extended display on instead of duplicate display?
I'm going to ask Mr. something.
I think. Is that your background? Is that screen right there your background?
Yeah. You may be able to do this quicker than me, Sean, or... But they can probably style it well.
Yeah, okay, as long as that doesn't create a problem.
It's because you're not dup-, you're not duplicating, but, I mean, you could.
It's weird that something comes up without.
Yeah, well.
Oh, there you go.
But it's not the ideal way to do it because now it's on the.
Yes.
Maybe I heard it pop. Yeah, is it, they, they did hear it, oh.
Good enough?
No.
No. Not now. Thank you for your patience, so try to get this straightened out.
Why did it change on the screen? It seems to Google me over there. I don't want to.
Did you want to purposely duplicate?
I, I tried to duplicate the screen, but that's when it went to Google me. So I think your input now.
It should be HDMI. If I drag that over again, is that?
You know, the wire, the wire should be on the bottom input to get it up here and all that, because I'm not getting it up on the.
You're changing the picture, so.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, I can change it at least for this one.
Okay, we ready to begin? Uh, as Jim mentioned, Manny, you had asked that this be on the agenda, and probably would have been on anyway, but we'll give you credit. So if you'd like to start the conversation, take it from there.
Yeah, I also, I've been talking to Sean Leach, and, you know, been out there, I monitored the highway department during the storm, and I knew, you know, I actually talked with the Board of Health the following day when they were doing the final cleanups. And so that, that was kind of the reason I, I, I wanted to bring this on the agenda. Mostly, I, I knew the residents would be calling the selectmen, and my concern too is, is East Beach Road. And, and it's our emergency access and utilities going out that way, so I just, I think that it was, it's kind of time that we come up with some kind of plan and ready ourselves for. This was a minor storm. And I think the next storm's gonna take it out and take the utilities out. So we gotta come up with some kind of plan to, as a town and the property owners, to see what we're gonna do in the future here.
You talking specifically about the road or the totality?
Well, I think it's twofold.
Yeah.
I, I mean, the road's our problem, and the properties seem to be East Beach association, but I think we gotta come up with, you know, there's been a ton of studies out there, and Sean's familiar with, with most of them and what's going on out there. He actually monitored some other situations that we, we had on the other side that's gonna, you know, I was hoping that the harbor master was here, but now he knows he's on vacation, we can't ask him those questions. But, um, we need to decide what we're gonna do.
Uh huh.
You know, and I think Sean can help us with that. And, and, you know, I'm looking, I, I know what we can do in the immediate future, and we gotta repair this road. Highway's gotta go in there and, and do something and fix it. And I, I think we need to move forward with some kind of plan, not just a patch, till the next storm when the utility boards are all taken out.
And what would be the best process to get to that objective?
Well, I think we should bring Sean in and ask him a couple of questions.
Jim, can you bring up the other, hopefully, the other?
Sean, you can stand here or come here if you wish, whatever you, whatever you're comfortable with.
I might have to point to something, because I don't want people.
Okay, okay.
Can you bring up one of the comparisons?
I'm trying.
That's the problem with using it as a, just second monitor, it's hard to navigate.
There we go.
There you go.
Let's go back, one. No, you had it somewhere. There you go. There we go. There's a good example. Okay, so I chose, I put together this little exhibit here, and I'll have to come up here. Uh, this is a comparison of nineteen ninety-two, and that's after, I purposely chose nineteen ninety-two because it was after Bob and Gloria. And two thousand and five, before Sandy and Irene. So we get an idea of what's going on at the beach. The same map, I don't know if you can see them very well, the yellow lines, the lot lines. You see the difference between shoreline ninety-two, shoreline two thousand and five? Significant. It's, if you use the scale there, there's probably about fifty to sixty feet of each less, and that's with no hurricane. That's just average storms, average type of thing. Nothing we can do about it. Go ahead.
Those taken during the same tide?
Yeah, oh, yeah. Basically, yes, they're taken at mid-tide. They do that on purpose. But you can see, you, uh, there's some things that we're all familiar with. A, this rock that's at the easterly end of all the, what I'll call the trailer of lots, and where it shows here. The problem we've had, and I've watched it for the last, I need to say two long, I don't know, forty years, driving back and forth here, is, is going away. And what the solution has been for you as the landowners, is do beach nourishment plans, pile up the sand, then we get a storm like this and everything disappears. So you're spending a lot of money to build up your lot, and in the same vein, it goes away in one storm. And the, both storms that happened last December and this December, similar type of storm, southeast winds, the whole deal, to the way a big chunk. Now, from this, there's probably thirty or forty feet missing because of the storm that just happened. So where these lots had maybe forty, fifty feet on the easterly end, or trailer space, I'll call it, they probably have ten or fifteen. Now, the question is, the same problem is, and you see the road hasn't been moved here, but you can see that for years, it washed over here. You see a light breaking? That's where light to wash over. After Hurricane Irene and Sandy, the road was raised, there was more building up of the lots, so now it's picking and choosing its own path to get through. Putting sand on top of cobble is not a really good solution, because it's basically, you know, one wave hits it, it disintegrates and it just blows through. Uh, I, I hate to see you, so there has to be a comprehensive plan. And what happens is, when it blows through, it wants to wash over the road and get into the lead, like naturally does on all barrier beaches. When it does that, your neighbors to the north of you are picking up everything that you had on your lot, essentially.
I get you.
Well, depending on where you are.
I get you.
So, it is if, you, the way it's being built, where you're building it up high and you've got a very steep beach, doesn't work very well with the way dynamics of waves work. And what happens is the wave, it's just like you're driving a car. You're driving a car and you've got this pitched sand ramp, the car will slow down and roll back. Put a pile of sand there, car hits it, everything gets damaged. That's basically what you're doing here. So this, there's a couple of solutions, and I've, I've talked to Manny, and I've had this conversation before. Either, everybody has to figure out a solution to work together on the whole beach, because it can't work if these five people do it and these don't, because the water is gonna go find its way and go through them. And once it goes through them this way, it just erodes that way. So your options are this. Now, as far as the road is concerned, the place where it washes out, if you go back, uh, one more? There you go. Where this curve is, that's where they raised it about three or four feet after Irene and Sandy. That's where the waves come through. It's, it's looking for a way to go through, it's built up here, it breaks through there. Once it breaks through there, all bets are off going down the road. And it's gonna keep doing that. It's not, the road is not gonna be there. So there's two solutions to this. One is equalize the pressure on each side. You raise the road, put a lot of secrets and culprits in, water can go through, that'll work on a mild storm, will work on a major storm. Do you put in a, a road that's lower, so that just every time the water comes through, it just washes over? Solution happens all the time. Atlantic Avenue happens all the time, but wherever the town's gonna fix it.
Sean, can I, I, I mean, one question with that, low, low on the road, I mean, that's our emergency access out there.
Right.
And we also got, you know, the telephone poles. That's gonna do nothing for coastal resilience, so I don't think that's really.
So there are grants and things available for coastal resiliency and climate change to shore up and protect lots, but it's only gonna work if everybody from Gooseberry to Dartmouth gets on board. Because otherwise, we're forever gonna be cleaning off this road, and where this is, where this wants to wash through now, where it used to come through over here, where this wants to wash through is gonna be broken up every time. It, it hits, it breaks up, and then it drags it back to the ocean. And it's gonna keep doing that as long as there's a steep slope, because now, you'll see these dash lines? That's where the road layout is. It's a fifty-foot road layout for East Beach. The roadway now goes out of the layout in that section and then goes back into it. These lots down here on the easterly end, pretty much the only thing that's left is basically road layout, as we stand here tonight. Now, you're gonna, you can get a permit to fill up to the high watermark, we all know, the beach nourishment, but if you don't have vegetation, you don't have something protecting the sand on tall bearings, it's just, you know, next week, next year, a few years from now, it's gonna be gone.
The, the, so you had these plans from, from the nineties, but.
This is not the plan for us to move the road, to protect it, and provide a parking area on where East Beach. You'll notice that down here, there wasn't a lot of damage, because there's a nice sloping beach for the water to go up, hit the road and come back without dragging something with it.
I mean, so, so another conversation, I, I mean, I, I've seen, like, the first time that the Army Corps took photos of this area was in thirty-eight.
Right.
After the thirty-eight hurricane. Where was the line in thirty-eight?
Probably about another seventy-five feet further from what this is. The look, when you say the line, you mean low watermark?
Or, or, or mean high water.
Okay, mean high water, it's probably seventy-five feet. But there was much more beach, there were a lot more cobble too. You look at the pictures from the turn of the century, the houses on this beach, they had wooden walkways to get over the cobble, because it was loaded with cobble. It's funny how most of the cobble, you know, is all over the place, but there are some sandy spots when you get into the water.
Sean, as chair, would you mind if I allow questions from the group now while you're, while you're presenting?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
So if anybody wishes to speak, come up to the microphone. If you have any thoughts, ideas, comments?
Now, my interest in this, just so you know, beside being an engineer, is this is a town facility that we're trying to make nicer, because we don't have any more beach to make, we have more people using town beaches. And right now, this doesn't work where you park on this side of the road and go to this side of the road to use the beach. It would work much better to move the road along the backside and provide all this area to park and heat, and it would also protect the road moving it further from the ocean, obviously.
Whoever's, yeah, the, the, well, this gentleman had his hand up first.
I'll give Tony the floor first, Jim.
So the, the ground rules here are, you, you need to go to the microphone and identify yourself. You get to speak for five minutes, although I can change that. Questions are normally addressed through the chair. However, because we have a presenter here, as far as I'm concerned, unless Mr. Leach objects, questions may be directed to him. And that's, that's it. Nothing complicated. So who wishes to be the first speaker? We have two people who are interested, so. I noticed a lady in the back, she will be next.
Hi, I'm Tony Vivencio, one thirty-four East Beach Road. So a, a couple of, of quick points. So I served on the, the MVP Committee where we, we looked at this, and Sean has just described one of the conclusions, the recommendations from the MVP Committee, which is a, a partnership between the town and the East Beach landowners to raise the road and add material on the beachside to better protect it with deeper and longer lots that will enable a more gradual slope. That's one of the recommendations. Another recommendation is the causeway and its effects. We have some data in that report that shows the erosion pattern over time since the eighteen hundreds. It basically, it's at a somewhat of a steady state point with a lot of cobbling. So, you know, addressing the causeway and the, the Buzzards Bay Study is going to be completed this year, that three million dollar study on the effect of the causeway. One other point that I wanted to make, and this is related to this particular December storm, is the town cleanup effort here, when there was substantial amount of cobble on East Beach Road. Instead of putting that cobble back on the beachside lots, where it could be bulldozed back to protect the road, that cobble was basically taken by the town. And we estimate there was well over a hundred eighteen-yard truckloads that were taken, the trucks were just lined up and running non-stop from early in the morning till past dark. We have photographic evidence and some eyewitnesses here.
Mr. Chair. Uh, so, lastly, just finish the thought, then we'll have Mr. Soros address it. I mean, you can go on, but.
Yeah, so I think one, just recommendation related to resiliency here, is that that, to establish a policy that that material just be pushed back to the beachside lots from whence it came. I mean, I do have a draft policy that I can circulate, that, you know, the town can then use as a basis for discussion.
Okay. Mr. Soros, you have questions?
Did Highway have any subcontractors doing that, that work? I mean, they don't want, they don't want a making out truck.
Well, they had, yeah, I mean, Kevin Hurt was, was there. He was watching them. I have photos of the trucks lined up.
No, I'm not, I'm not hiding that the material on the roadway was taken from the roadway. I don't believe they, legally, they could put them on the lots, however.
On the setback.
I'm not, look.
On the setback.
You've got a fifteen-foot setback.
No, I, I, I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, I'm not trying to say that, we want, I'm here to try to help you guys.
Oh, yeah.
And, and I just wanna say that, that Highway wasn't, you know, like stealing your material, they were trying, you know, it's an emergency access road, and I, I don't know that they can pull that there, but, again, what I think Sean's trying to get to, and what I would like to see happen here, is East Beach and the town come up, come up with a beach nourishment plan to repair the whole beach all the way down. I have a couple ideas that we're gonna get into, and I just wanted to get into that, just, just because you said eighteen, you know, it looks like Highway's stolen the material. You know, the town does have some material, and I think our plans, and I'm, I'm looking on this dredge project that the Army Corps got coming up. Um, the, the, the Army Corps is gonna dredge material out of the river that came off Bossack to, to a dune and go out in the ocean and dump it. I wanna see them give it to East Beach. I think that's where it should be put. We, we also, East Beach is, so the stuff that the Army Corps is gonna do out of the Westport River didn't come from East Beach, but we got our neighbors, they're mining what came from East Beach at the entrance, so having a contract to come in at the entrance to Allen's Pond and go out in the ocean and dump it. I mean, we need them to bring it back over to East Beach, you know, we need to work together.
Right.
And that's, that's what I'm trying to do here. I don't want to stop pointing fingers that Highway's stealing your dirt, you know. It's, we, we need to work together on this. We need to save each beach, beach. The other thing is, this was a relatively minor storm, if you guys have been down here for a long time, it was relatively minor. We get a hurricane, we're losing poles, or what does that do for coastal resilience? I think this, this plan that Sean has here, I mean, if, if the association's on board with it, I think it's something that we need to move forward with, like sooner than later, because we all, the, the problem here is you, you wanna study it, and the town studies everything, we spend all this money on studies, but as soon as this, the study doesn't say what they want it to say, they forget there's a study. Sean's looked at all of these studies. I, I mean, Sean's countless hours dedicated to what this is. A thing that, that I know I can do, if this plan and the layout, if we can get approval from the town and this layout and this plan, I can take this plan to EverSource, and I can guarantee you guys in two weeks, I can have a free design for putting that underground electric underground. And, and coming up with a plan for the, the whole thing. I know I can have, get that done. A thing that I know I can do, if this plan and the layout, if we can get approval from the town on this layout and this plan, I can take this plan to Eversource, and I can guarantee you guys in two weeks, I can have a free design of putting that underground electric underground. And coming up with a plan for the whole thing. I know I can get that done. But we need to all get on the same page and try to move forward with that. I mean, that's just step one on the roadway. And we need to go in to the Army Corps and talk of what's going on with that dredging project, and what's going on, there's a lot of other things going on where we can get this material, where it's not gonna cost you, like Shaun said about the grants. And this is, you know, we can't just sit by and just let, we know the problem's erosion. Let's do what we need to do to stop it. Or beach nourishment, which replenishes it. I mean, there's no reason we can just sit here and just let it go away. I mean, the road's gonna be gone. It looked like, you know, another storm, we're gonna lose the road. How do those people get out of there? All the power's cut off down there. I mean, we're gonna wait till that happens? So I just wanna, I'm sorry, I'm going off on an angle here.
Okay, but you still have some time left on the clock.
So, yeah, one of the other recommendations, and I think Shaun touched on this, is like a bulk permitting to allow nourishment on a broad basis. And that's one of the other things we're asking.
I think realistically, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the only way the state's gonna let you do that is if everybody gets on board. I don't know if you were, who was there? Anybody here from ninety-five, ninety-six? Okay, so in ninety-five, ninety-six, Aubrey did this study. You've probably seen the study. And they approached, I think, just about every landowner about doing a similar thing like that, and there was a petition signed against them. Because their fear is, if the state, what's the state up to? They're gonna take our land, they're gonna do something. There's always suspicion about what the state was gonna do at the time. And had it been done, then, like it was proposed, we wouldn't be having this conversation right now. But I mean, that storm that we just had, if you went on to Gooseberry, and I did, there were, you know, five-time boulders that were rolled up onto the course. So you need to do something fairly quickly, and the town and the residents need some time. I don't wanna see East Beach disappear, because of my concern with the beach committee. And I also, you can't get rid of East Beach, because you have to have a second act, like beach reservation or given a reservation altogether. So something has to happen. And the towns, you understand the town's main purpose, I understand what Highway was doing. I gotta open the road to get Eversource down there to take care of their problems. And, you know, concentrating on whose rock goes where is kind of difficult when you're trying to do that. I mean, I think you did an admirable job getting it open to this.
Yeah, it's a lot of work. I just would submit that moving the fill to the adjacent lot setback is quicker than piling it and waiting for a truck and loading it. And it's better for the beach.
Yeah, but some of you people, you've got septic systems on there. I mean, this isn't...
Not on the setback. It's on, we're talking about the setback.
One speaker at a time, I'm sorry. Sir, you need to finish up in your timeframe. There was also a lady at the back who raised her hand, so if you're finished, and...
I would say, you know, up into, up into the angle point, which is about halfway down the road, the first angle point, then mid-angle point, way to the metric landing. I would say that you probably got twenty-five feet from the pavement south is part of the right way. A lot of the trailers that are in that stretch are basically on the right way, even last year. When you turn the corner, it gets a little better. It gets a little narrow up in there where you are, again, you know, and then it wipes out again. But, you know, from what I've seen, what I've done, the work I've done in this area, is not a lot left. At some point, you can only, with beach nourishment, you can only fill the high watermark, the high watermark from thirty feet. So something needs, a plan needs to come up, and I would recommend that, you know, everybody get on board, or get, I don't know how many members. I know the East Beach Improvement Association doesn't include everyone on the beach. But I think there needs to be consensus or something done as soon as possible, because it'll be made before you know it, and then there's gonna be a lot of people who probably haven't been down there yet. Because there are a lot of people on this beachside who didn't put trailers on there last year, because I think they're older and it's just a lot more work, and they just don't do it anymore. You know, so they have to get on board, too, and I don't know if you can get them on board. Something has to be done to save the road and...
Do we have timeframes on when the dredging projects are happening?
Well, I think, you know, it's close. And what Shaun just said to me, what just happened, I think is gonna make it serious. I mean, they were, you know, the harbor master was complaining last year about the channel. So, you know, and talking with, you know, we had a lot of fishermen stood here. I mean, I've been down to the point and talked to some of the fishermen, the quality of the river, we need to get the flow going. So we need to dredge all that sand out of the river, and now we get the flow going, the quality of river will improve. If we can, you know, we need to get this plan ready, so when they start, I mean, this, if they're gonna, you know, they could come and tell us, this is the Army Corps, they can come and tell us tomorrow we're dredging the river. They're coming with a barge, and they're gonna go out to sea and drop it out of sea. You know, we gotta come up with some kind of plan, if we gotta work with them and have them put it on another barge. You know, we've just beached the barge on East Beach, and, you know, I mean, this is where you're gonna get your cost-effective material to replenish the beach.
And the town, Cherrywood Beach lost about three-quarters of a mile of the beach. And all that sand ended up in the river. So I don't know what the channel, or the former inter-channel looks like today.
I checked with a lobster man that came in from sea the day before, the night, the day before New Year's Eve, and he came in using the channel lockers that were previously...
The inter-channel?
And I said, "How'd you make it?" And he said, "It was pretty tricky." He said, "At times we have five and a half feet," and he said, "We draw," you know, "six feet." So it was like, we're probably hitting the bottom in the channel.
I mean, I'd wanna see that version go back onto the town beach, truthfully. That's where it came from. Your issue is down at Allen's Pond. They're down there every spring, digging out that pond with an excavator.
Different subjects now, so I'm gonna call this part, be completed, and this lady that had a hand up wishes to come, and I don't wanna hold...
Do you mind if I just pass out that draft policy and a calculation of the material taken?
Yeah, please, please.
And just one other quick note, is that the Buzzards Bay Study also indicates Slocum's River, same problem.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Deborah Attardo. I have three lots down on East Beach, one on the oceanside, which is gone. I've been there for fifty-two years, and sand is not gonna help us. You guys sucked up all the rocks. I have not leveled my lot since Hurricane Bob. I always just used it and didn't level it like everyone else, so I had rock up to here, and that's all gone. And you guys sucked it up, took it down to the town beach, and took it down to the other beach at the other end. And there's giant cobble down by where Andy's was. Giant boulders are down there, which I could never put on my beach. And there's giant boulders that get put down the town beach, and I don't get to put those down there. And dredging a bunch of sand from the river is not gonna help me. One storm and river, sand is gone. I need rock. And I had rock, now the rock's gone. And I know you guys are trying to help, and you wanna put...
You know, that's also, you know, part of the dredging, put the sand back over there. But another thing, and it's the way it's placed, Shaun's mentioned this on a design of how it's put there. But there's also a lot of other measures on battering the beach. It's something that we can do.
We haven't been able to do any of that.
That's why I'm trying to say we all gotta get together, you know, the town property...
There's a hundred people that own their property there, and you're never gonna get a hundred people to all be one big happy family.
If they don't get, like Shaun said, pretty soon they're not gonna have it.
Try to get a hundred people to be all united when they're not, I mean, I've been proud of this association for years, and there's...
Again, what I'm trying to do, and I'm trying to get you people material through, like Shaun said, we can do this through grants, so that it's not gonna be a cost to, because I'm sure that many of these people, like you, you've owned a lot for fifty-two years. You're not the person that just came in and spent all this money on this last bit.
Well, and I did everything else the town, so I'd, you know, make my septic tank a tight tank, put in an alarm that is totally useless now. There's a lot of things that we just kept doing for the town, wanted us to do these things. Granted, this storm was out of the blue, wiped us out big time. And it's great that if you guys wanna help us in any way, that'd be great, but we're an association. We're not, we're a hundred different landowners. We're not everyone on the same page at the same time, which would be great, but it's really...
Well, the other thing is, the town, that's our right of way, and that's what I'm saying, is we're moving forward for coastal resilience plan. So we would love for you all to be on board...
And that would be great.
So that we can move forward there, because we need to protect the road.
Right.
And I mean, we're gonna probably protect the town property, no matter, we're gonna protect the property no matter what.
And I'm gonna be on my beach, no matter what. No matter come hella high water, I will be there. So I will smush it down, and I will be there. So thanks. I just wanted you to fix it, please, that'd be great. Keep my rocks back.
Kevin, did you have a hand up?
Yeah, just a couple of minutes.
Please.
Kevin Kurt, President, East Beach Improvement Association, eighty-five East Beach Road. Obviously, we come here today because we're looking for a little bit of, what's the word, cooperation. I wanna speak to what Manny said and to what Shaun said in regards to trying to work together to come up with a common solution. Are there, are some things out there that have already been proposed? Beach nourishment, resiliency study, with a recommendation to raise the road and try to fortify that area in the south as well as possibly on the north, because as sea levels rise, the tides from the backside are gonna come up a little bit higher. We all know that, that was all part of the study. Shaun mentioned something that caught my ear, grant money. After this initial incident, we had a meeting in this room three days later. And town officials said, "We're gonna see what we can do to try and find some state emergency money. We're gonna do what we can to help you." So we're here looking for help, and we also wanna do this in the spirit of the settlement that we had, some cooperation with each other, because you have a vested interest in that area. We have a vested interest in that area. What are we gonna do? Relocating all the stuff on the road, as much as it seemed like an injustice to us, we knew something had to be done, because you had to protect the two vulnerable sides of the road. But common sense tells me, after listening to Shaun, you made the middle of the road even more vulnerable. You did it to yourself. So now, what are you gonna do? We'll work with you, we want you to work with us, but we need answers, as a town and as a community. Or we're gonna be standing here again, saying, "Gee, that was nice, but now people can't live there." We're gonna pave paradise and make it a parking lot to steal a line from somebody. And that's it, we'll get our fifty dollars, we'll park cars there, and we won't have to worry about it ever again, until the next hurricane. So I know this sounds a little bit rough, but at the end of the day, that's where it's leading. And I'm open to any suggestions. I'd love to work with Shaun, I'd love to go back to that resiliency study and come up with some ideas. Relocating the power lines, it deserves to be looked at. It will solve a problem, it might help for the short term for infrastructure, but keep in mind, it's a barrier beach. You don't wanna put thirteen thousand volts in a barrier beach. That can be a problem. We can have people look at it, they do it out on the Cape, people get electrocuted. It's something to consider. There's a lot of stuff that we need to put together, but like Manny says, we need to do it soon rather than later.
Yeah, that's, like I said, on the Eversource thing, that's on Eversource. That's Eversource's utility over there. I'm taking the town, the town plan, giving it to Eversource. Their engineers are gonna do that for us for free. That's no longer, it's now a covenant.
But is it, but is it the best solution?
Yeah, it needs to be underground.
And then that's, what do you do there?
The whole town needs to be underground.
Shaun, you look like you wanna speak to something.
It comes under the category, as I always say, if, you know, you teach a monkey to shoot a rifle, doesn't make it a good idea. You know, it's hard to say whether that's a good idea when you do a raised conduit alongside of guardrail, along one side of the beach that you can, and where typically on barrier beaches in Carolinas and stuff, when the storm comes, they tell you right away, "We're shutting you off." So there is no, we're shutting you off when the storm's over, then we'll turn it back on. There isn't much you can do. I'm concerned from a town standpoint about the access road and the town beach. As, you know, but everybody has to work together, because the only place that there's a real beach slope is over in this area. And that's why that doesn't get damaged like the rest of East Beach does. And as it keeps getting shorter and shorter, and gets closer to the road, it gets steeper and steeper. We all know that. So we have to, either everybody gets on board, and like I said, you can't be one or the other. You look at what happened at West Beach when they armored part of that, and you saw what happened around the corner from the armament, you know, sidewalks hanging all over the water and everything like that. That's the same thing that's gonna happen unless everybody gets on board.
We've been encouraged, and we've made a lot of progress with getting everyone to have a notice of intent on that south side of the beach at the urging of the conservation agent. Can I speak and say every single person has done that? No. But I think that's a good step in the right direction in regards to getting everyone with that nourishment paperwork, if you will. So that way, maybe we can move forward to get a blanket notice of intent. Is it gonna be like trying to herd a bunch of ants and get everybody on the same train? It might be, but if they realize that they don't have much of an issue, or much of a choice, then they don't have much of a choice. But to get back to the item of the actual, I guess the point I'm trying to ask is, what's gonna happen when we have a next storm? Tomorrow night, we're forecasted sixty mile an hour. If it's not a southwest surge, we're okay. Or southeast. If it is, now what are we gonna do? So you don't have that extra material, because it's now been relocated. I like to use that term relocated now. What are we gonna do in the spring when these people do push their material back, and there's not enough to protect not only their private property, but your road? Where can we gain that material? Does anybody have any suggestions other than sand?
Shaun, with the FEMA stuff, is there anything that we can do, you know, because of what...
Not really. Coastal zone management, we're required to get environmental permitting and any kind of thing. We went through this in the beach committee, we talked to coastal zone management, we've been out there. They say either all or none. They don't wanna see partial armament, they don't wanna see part of the beach nourishment, they don't want, because it's just literally just trying to fill the inlet.
So again, like you came to us, and we wanna work together. I think, you know, possibly through grant funding, can we pay for the design of all East Beach? So to get everybody on board, if it's not gonna cost them anything?
And I'll get them all on board.
The problem is, not necessarily if the design is implemented, design is acceptable. And that could mean several different things. They did allow armament and revamp over on the West Beach side, that didn't work very well. Worked very well for the houses that have it in front of it, doesn't work for what they came for.
Shaun has a question.
So we have a number of issues here. Some of them seem like they could be addressed, like, shorter term, like if we need a policy for what we're gonna do, you know, the next, you have to balance that we have to clear the roadway with the, yeah, let's try to keep the material where it goes, right? This board and this meeting isn't really prepared, we're not really the right mechanism to do this. So between the two of you who've been brought this to our attention, what is your proposal for the next step? You both have talked about getting everybody on the same page, but what's your mechanism that you're proposing for how we get everybody on the same page? And what's your mechanism for, like, like, it sounds to me, I mean, I hate to say this, but it sounds to me like you need a committee that is focused on this, that is looking at the alternatives and making recommendations. But I don't know, is Beach Committee already doing this? Is Infrastructure Committee, is, like, I don't know, we already have a committee working on this? But the only way you're gonna get people on the same page, and the only way you're gonna be able to come up with, you know, polished recommendations for approaches, somebody's gonna have to take ownership of that? So what's the proposal for who should own it?
So there's two things that are of importance, and there's two things that are addressed to the resiliency grants and everything like that. The resiliency grants address something for the town, and in other words, town infrastructure. They don't wanna talk about what's going on on the residential lot. They wanna know what does the town need to save its infrastructure, that's the beach. That's a whole different argument from what the East Beach residents wanna do. But if you do them both at the same time, East Beach residents can individually apply for grants, and FEMA grants and resiliency grants. The first thing you need to do is get coastal zone management down there.
So, but you're not answering the question. The question is, what's the mechanism? Who should be, who should be asking coastal zone management to come out there? Who, what is the body that should be doing that?
The Highway Department would be the one to get coastal zone management to try and get them to address the issues of what's going on in East Beach. I mean, the Highway Department, they're the maintainer of the infrastructure of the town. They would come out and get coastal zone management, and they'd get ideas from coastal zone management and ideas of where to apply for grants. But that would only take care of the town part. The East Beach Association has to approach the same coastal zone management and say the same thing. We wanna get this together. You get the two, the realization that you have a residential issue, and you have a infrastructure issue, which is extremely important to the resilience, the climate resiliency grants and all things like that, they may help out East Beach. Because what I've seen in the past, like, with what happened to Chatham, what happened in Boston, is when they're not...
Yeah, but again, you're not just, so the core of my question is, how do we proceed as a town to help coordinate these things? Somebody has to do it, so is there, are we just trying to figure out who that somebody should be? Or is there a proposal?
The infrastructure thing, the Highway Department could take the lead. I don't know if Jim wants to...
We got, like, five guys in the Highway Department, none of whom have expertise in residential coastal zone management.
That's right. So is there is, do you have town emergency management coordinated? I don't think the town has that anymore.
We do, if we have a fire chief.
Yeah, so the fire chief has emergency coordination, getting in touch with, I guess, because he would be in charge of FEMA stuff.
So you're recommending that the fire chief and the highway surveyor coordinate a massive effort for these multiple-pronged approaches of things that have to happen?
Well, they need to approach, if they wanna save the road. If they want, if a road is a priority to save, which my opinion is, then they are in charge of that.
Well, I mean, okay, so if the road is the primary problem here, then you're right... Well, okay, so if the road is the primary problem here, then you're right. So then they will do that, right? But what you guys have both been talking about is getting everybody on the same page. I'm trying to figure out how we get everybody on the same page.
We need help.
The only way to connect the road is to do something on the beach.
Okay, let's, two hands up at the same time. Can you be brief?
And I think we're both gonna speak to the same subject that Sean is bringing up. And who's gonna spearhead any effort to try and herd this whole thing together? Do you make a committee made up of three or four different members from each area? Sean seems to have a lot of knowledge to guide us with grants and things like that, not to throw you in front of a bus, but I did. Somebody from the Beach Association, in conjunction with the fire chief, who's the emergency management guy, and possibly your Highway Department. You get four people who can sit down, each bring their concerns to the table, and try to formulate some sort of plan to bring back to you or to move forward, whether it's with, through the resiliency study to start to get grants, so we can bring them to you. For however that works. Does that seem to answer the problem, the question?
Ultimately, you know, I'm chair of the beach, right, as a committee, but we're just an advisory committee. Ultimately, I would like to see something as chair of the beach committee to protect East Beach, so it can be used for recreation. So, there is a many-person interest here, but I don't know who takes the lead.
And maybe that's what we all have to go take out of this meeting is, what's the proposal for how do we attack this problem? Because I think that we're just gonna be frustrated every single time we talk because, you know, we're gonna have another storm or, you know, something else is gonna happen over there and we don't have a cohesive approach here. And I don't see anybody obvious that's an existing committee or an existing employee. Maybe if we had a town engineer, maybe they would help us up with this. But I don't see any existing body that can coordinate, that has the cycles to coordinate all that. And I think this is really a coordination problem. So maybe we just need to go think about how do we coordinate.
The gentleman has some comments, I'm sure.
Sure, yeah. So, as part of the MVP study, there was a recommendation for a follow-on committee. So there was a climate resiliency committee that was created. And then there's, they broke that up into sub-areas, and one of those is the Ocean Committee, which focuses on coastal issues. So that committee does exist. The town planner is kind of tied into that overall coastal resiliency committee.
I'm on that committee, so maybe that's an angle to take with that committee and have them pick some of this stuff.
Right. I think that should be explored because that, you know, that's kind of in their charter.
Good idea.
Roughly.
Thank you.
I don't have to give myself over. I can bring it to the climate resilience committee though.
Okay, we had some ideas. What's the next move here? What is the pleasure of the committee on this matter?
I'd like to just say something on that part is, I think we kind of just addressed it, that the planning board should take the lead on this.
Then let's ask the planning board to take the lead. Like, this is what I'm trying to say. Who should be coordinating it?
I think we should. Because we do have a volunteer engineer, just like we have another volunteer engineer on the beach committee.
Well, is that your recommendation to us? Yeah, okay. We can put that forth, of course.
If I made, the town of Dartmouth uses their conservation agent and their planner as the FEMA coordinator.
So I think maybe we need to cast the net of these different committees that already exist and the different departments that already exist and see where it makes sense.
See what other towns are doing.
Okay, is that course of action? Jim, you digesting all of this?
Yeah, I don't know if I have any tasks to do on this one.
Well, I don't know, like, how do we reach out to these different groups? Because we can't just say, planning board, you're doing this. So maybe you can liaise with the planning board and check in.
I would, I'd make a motion to ask the planning board to take lead, take the lead on coastal resilience plan for East Beach.
I'll second that. Yeah, and we'll get their reaction. I don't know what, I know they're busy people. You know that. I do.
Jim Wayne was doing something with that too, eh?
Yeah, at least they should get back to us, tell us what they can do.
Everybody's working on all those committees over there, so I think.
So we'll ask the planning board.
Yeah, we want something tangible, and that is a tangible thing. These people are gonna do this, get it going.
So we already mentioned Highway. I mean, Highway's gonna need to do something. We already lost a piece of the road. They gotta do something to fix it. If we get this other storm they're talking about, they're gonna lose another piece of the road. So we're gonna just keep waiting, you know, and what are we gonna do? Just go out there, throw a Band-Aid on it, keep moving the stuff around? We gotta, we gotta come up with some kind of plan. You know, conservation's gonna be needed to involve in this, because that's one of the reasons Highway's not pushing the stuff onto your lots. Because he's not letting, you know, I mean, it's, you gotta open up the road as fast as we can, and that's what happened.
Do the same thing with, and they can beach out. They have to move the materials.
The comments first from the select board? If not, I'll entertain any further comments from the public.
Yeah, just briefly, you know, again, I think the Ocean Committee could potentially be helpful in this regard because that's part of what there exists to do. And then, the other thing is, regarding the draft policy to, after a storm, push the cobble onto the setback, you know, I'd like to ask that that get reviewed and, you know, acted on in whatever the appropriate process is.
Okay, in that regard, I would ask Jim to speak to our lawyers. They drafted up the agreement that we reached with the East Beach Association a while back and ask about the next steps in that and come back to us, write wording and everything. I support the concept. It certainly makes sense. And it might be some things I'm not aware of, like the setbacks as well as the whole.
On beach out, we weren't allowed to put it back. I don't remember why. I don't know if Charlie Leach knows why. But they had to take it off-site for some reason. I don't know if it was CZM or MEMA or what, but I have to look into it.
All right, we can ask him with that. That's written in your paper.
And then one other quick follow-up question. In our previous meeting on this, on the topic of this storm cleanup, we touched on a reimbursement request by the property owners who had the material of, you know, that was washed from their property onto the road, removed and used for various repair projects in that vicinity. And I'm wondering if there is any progress on getting some type of reimbursement or in materials for the amount of material that was removed.
Well, in context of the budget, we haven't gotten very far in that, frankly. We did seek help from the state through MEMA, and that has not borne any fruit yet. Jim's on top of that. I would say we could, this is an issue that would have to come before the finance committee. And we would, we'd have to define, what are we looking for? How much? And where is the material coming from? I know at the meeting that I was at with you folks, it's almost impossible to get to, the cobble, similar, what do you call it?
I mean, and you got landowners on the other side that got some of your material. What landed on the road, and I mean, who knows where, what came from what, and what numbers. I know you know what we took off the road. It's complicated. That's why we're looking to try to, we're looking to try to solve this for everybody. And I'm glad you guys came in here and you're, you know, cordial. And nobody's trying to attack you. I'm not trying to attack you. I'm not trying to attack the town. We just work together, resolve this. I think we're gonna get, we engage the planning board in this. You know, like they said, Highway, Highway and new Fire Chief are kind of in charge of what we need to do to fix the road. We work through planning and try to pull all these moving parts together. I mean, I think someone out there who's pushing the cobbles might be a conservation issue. And again, we're gonna look at the lawyers, and it's gonna be, the conservation agents are gonna have to look at that too.
If you notice in the draft policy, I did quote Mass CMR regarding the assumption in the guidelines that the material is protective and should not be removed unless the person running the project can demonstrate that that material is not. So we know that that material is protective down there and it should not be removed from the system. So I quoted that and highlighted that in yellow on that draft policy.
Staff assisting, they didn't take it, they didn't haul it off-site.
They took it down the road and used it on a parking lot, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for the comments. Okay, a motion has been made and seconded. We have that on the table regarding bringing forth the planning board, as Manny suggested, and I second it. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is unanimous. And we thank you. Thank you for your participation tonight. This has been very helpful to us.
We'd like to, on behalf of the Beach Association, thank you guys for at least giving us the opportunity to, you know, speak our piece and obviously get on the same page with you as a body so that we can solve the problems that we have before us.
Thank you, Kevin. Thanks for being here. Okay, a very, very important discussion. The next item is a big one too. It may seem more mundane at the moment, based on our earlier discussion on East Beach, but fiscal year 2025 budget discussion, and we have to do some things there. Jim, you can lead us in that. I don't know if you can.
I just want to update the board on where we are from the last meeting. Free cash was certified. It was certified at $2.3 million, which was lower than our preliminary estimates. And this is one of the things that I was cautioned about before, that these things change quickly and that we really wait till the end before we announce. But anyway, it has been certified at $2.3 million. We have the Enterprise Fund, the Waterline, the Hub Enterprise and the Beach Enterprise that were also certified as of last week. The governor's budget is to be released the last week of January. And I just received notice today that there will be some 9C cuts coming forth. They haven't announced what they are, but I think it's $375 or $394 million in 9C cuts, which they're targeting, they said it will not impact the schools or the towns directly, but it could impact earmarks. I don't know if that will impact any of our earmarks yet, but I guess, my concern is that they're doing 9C cuts already, that the budget for next year is going to be much tighter than anticipated, so.
Can you explain 9C?
Yeah, I guess, I don't know all the details of it, but 9C is, I think, a state law that allows them to give mid-year reductions in previously approved budgets. So they approved this budget last year. This allows them to reduce those numbers mid-year. So again, our free cash is still a decent number. You see, it's higher than we've had over the last 10 or 12 years. We're up at $3.2 million. Last year was $2.1 million. The year before was $1.6. It's really not high in comparison to other communities. It's just that we've been extremely low over the years. And that's, I think, mainly because our budgets are so tight that we've been budgeting as high as we can just to provide services here in town and services for the school. Preliminary, look at the free cash. The capital improvement planning committee is still working on their numbers, but I think they're in the range of about $1 million of projects. We have plenty of projects and only limited funding, but just the general idea of where we might want to look would be $1 million for CIPC. Warren Articles could run upwards to $450,000. I'm hoping that'll be a little bit lower. It's always good to put some money into the stabilization funds. And we have it in the past, but we can always carry over free cash. We don't have to allocate every dime that we get from free cash, and that would just roll into next year's free cash to give us a minimum balance, and then there'd be a remaining almost $400,000 that may be needed to offset some of the budgets. Again, this is, this is one of the difficult things with our budget, right? We start the budget September, October. We don't have all the numbers. So we're estimating on a lot of these major numbers that are coming in. Chapter 70 could be anywhere from $50,000 up to $550,000. Preliminary revenue estimates that we put in the budget that was presented to the board last year is about $100,000 of a chapter 70 increase. So that could actually, if we become a minimum aid community, that could be reduced by $50,000. If we're not considered a minimum aid community, that could go up $400,000. Assessments, school choice and charter schools, we won't get those until the state numbers come in. And we're gonna get the governor's budget the end of January, but then it has to go to the House, and then to the Senate, and then they convene and come up with a compromise budget. So we don't get the final budget until June after town meeting, so we make a lot of assumptions going in. We still don't have the regional assessments for Diamond and Bristol Aggie. We don't have the insurance rates for health insurance or property insurance. Property, they're estimating, they're telling us that we should budget at least 10% higher than last year. Health insurance, I'm hoping to get that number within the next few weeks. I mentioned this at the last meeting, so our preliminary new revenue is about $2 million. We have some offsets to that new revenue that bring it down to about $1.6 million. And then we get the 54%, 46% split. 54% to the school, it'd be about $881,000, and the town $750,000. That $881 does not take into consideration the $500,000 in free cash that was allocated last year. So looking at the school, the school has requested $1.6 million over last year's budget. If we include the $500,000 free cash, they'd be looking for $2.1 million. We're at about $381,000 right now. I think the town may be looking at some free cash to offset some of that budget. I think if we can go in a positive way and reduce it from the $500,000 last year, that would, that would help going forward. Ideally, it'd be nice if we could reduce that number about $100,000 each year going forward, so it wouldn't have as dramatic an impact on the budget. If we buy out the campground property with free cash, we would pay off in about $345,000 remaining on the campground. That would free up about $130,000 in the operating budget. And again, as I mentioned before, the chapter 70, it could increase $300,000 or $400,000, or it could decrease $50,000. We should have a good idea with the governor's budget where that number is at the end of the month. And then local receipts, it's been discussed that we're at about 80% of last year's, we estimate about 80% of last year's local receipts. That has been bumped up to about 86% already. There's a little bit of a cushion there. If we had to go up a little higher, we could, but we don't know what all the numbers are. So I'm reluctant to bump that up any higher at this point.
So Jim, in this, with your options here, what does that do to the $1,006,000?
So if we had the $381,000 we're at now, if we added $400 free cash, $130,000 from the campground, and if we were fortunate enough to get $300,000 from the chapter 70, 7, 8, 30,000, that brings us up to about, what, $1.2 million? It gets us in the ballpark of what the school was looking for.
And the 400, as you mentioned here, are free cash of the schools, but the other slide didn't have a number that large in it, right?
I think I was just under 400. I was, free, 392, so we could get, we could bump that up to 400 by reducing stabilization or free cash carryover.
Okay, I was thinking of the free cash carryover not being enough. Okay. But it is enough, you say. You have that. Now, one last question. This is a little bit unfair because it's a math thing. I was wondering, with the $1,002,000 that you had mentioned, when we end up with this iteration, what percentage of increase over last year's school budget would that be?
At about 881,000, we're at 4.25% or 4.3% increase. So if we go up to 1.2...
6? 6-ish?
Probably, yeah. 6, maybe just over 6.
Yeah, that's, I like to just know that purposes of scale. You know, when you have revenues of 3%, 6 is a big number. That's all it is.
So as, I've been working with the chair on the five-year plan for capital as well as the financial plan and going back 10 years. This is what the school yearly percentage increase has been, and this includes free cash. So you're probably looking, you know, a comfortable range is about 3.5% increase in their yearly budget. Last year, they had just over 5, almost 5.5% increase. Right now, if, we're hoping if we can get up to the $800,000, $900,000, that'd be about a 4.25% increase. Going forward, the revenues do not support increases of more than 3.5% for the school or the town. That's pretty much the maximum right there. More comfortable number would be 3%, but 3.5% based on the last couple of years in revenue. As long as the state doesn't have drastic cuts, we should be able to meet that, meet that number. So what that does for, for actual numbers is, this chart shows that the black line is new revenue, and this does not include free cash. So you can see the last three or four years, it's gone up fairly dramatically, but if you look the previous... But if you look, the previous years before that, that line that goes up and down, you can see it's all over the place. So you really cannot count on that revenue number going up straight like that. Part of that last, increase last year was because we went from a minimum aid community to a non-minimum aid community in Chapter 70, which bumped us up $500,000. If we didn't get that, that number, that line would be flat along that red line. So the red line I put there, that's pretty much where we are. As far as what I see we can support going forward is about a 3.5% increase, which is a total new revenue of about $1.4 million. Maybe it goes up to 1.5, maybe it goes down to 1.3, but it's in that $1.4 million range. So if you look at that $1.4 million, that leaves about somewhere between $750,000 and $800,000 for the school and somewhere around $650,000 for the town. We just can't support more than that increases in budgets. It just, it doesn't work. We don't have the numbers.
Jim, who's paying for the admin officers at the high school? Are they covering any, part of the cover of the utilities and stuff, I would imagine?
They pay $50,000 of the costs. The town picks up the rest. The town, well, the town side picks up the rest.
They also have custodial services.
Yes, they do.
That's not a direct bill, but they're doing custodial.
And the school itself is anywhere from $200,000 to maybe $300,000, probably closer to $225,000 to keep that open and operating. That's with no major repairs.
But the rentals and stuff that go in the schools?
The rentals right now are going to the schools. They really don't have much. They have, I think they rent the gym out a little bit, and they have the after-school program, which they might make a little bit of money out, but I think it just kind of gets them by.
I got you, but I'm just talking about the overall expenses, you know, when they get more in the town side, we're putting more into it, that's all. And we're talking about highway, power, fight people.
There is a benefit to them occupying the building insurance-wise, but it's not something we can continue to...
I'm not knocking it.
Keep stagnant the way it is.
We just need to look at true expenses, that's all. It's possible it's a little more than what's in the budget as it is, that's all.
Okay.
So that's where we are. And, you know, as we look forward, we're trying to project five years. That's what we've kind of come up with. You've got about a 3.5% increase we can support on local revenues and state revenues. And that's equivalent to about $1.4 million. So we just can't support a $1.6 million increase on a yearly basis. There's just no way. There's no way. So if, you know, if the school actually needs more, like a million dollars, 1.2, those cuts have to come from somewhere else.
Okay. Questions for Jim?
So I know we've looked at this in the past. I think it's probably when we came up with this 54-46 split. The town side budget is also bearing costs related to the school department. And I really think we don't get enough credit for that. The insurance, the unemployment insurance, the workman's compen, like, I forget what all of them are. So, but a pretty healthy portion of the non, the expense side that we can't touch is also in benefit of the school department, right? So I think it's health insurance and, I don't know.
It's property insurance. When health insurance, we kind of offset with the split before we get the new revenue.
Okay.
We have property insurance, we have workers' comp, we have...
Retirement.
Liability insurance, we have retirement or pension, you know, the pension we adjust.
I'm going to talk about, so you're talking about that's how we split the new growth, or the new revenue. We take the incremental cost of that.
Some of it's offset with the split.
Yeah.
Some of it isn't. The town absorbs the full amount. Even human resources and the treasurer's collector's office.
Right. So because, and it's, I just think people don't give us credit that some, like, I really liked how Cindy Brown in that meeting the other day put it, that what the school department is asking for, even if you closed completely Recreation Council on Aging in the library and the transfer station, it would not be enough to meet this need. And so I've been trying to think really hard about how do we meet this need for the school to get them more, but I just, I don't see it. I mean, I, I, I kind of like how you're talking about stepping down the free cash. So maybe we do appropriate some free cash over there, but maybe not as much. At least that kind of eases us into it, but it's, yeah. I think, because another one that somebody in that meeting kept saying was, they're, 80% of their costs are labor, 80% of their costs are labor. But 80% of our costs are also labor, because you have these pension, health insurance, these kind of shared costs that we're bearing on our side. But, so you can't change any of that, so the rest of it is still labor. It's people. And so, you know, I, yeah, I don't know.
So it takes the run of that?
Yeah.
There is a stabilization account, special stabilization account you can set up for special education, which my understanding is, once it's set up, you can remove money from it mid-year with the vote of the Board of Selectmen and a vote of the school committee. But that would be for more, for something that happens mid-year, right? So if they got a student mid-year that they hadn't anticipated, this could offset some of those costs. But it's still kind of like one-time funding, right?
Well, I really like that idea. I really like the idea, but it's really going to help you in future years, right? Because I don't, like, where do we have free cash to put in a stabilization account for possibly next two or three years? So I really liked that idea of using one-time money for like an account to offset that, but I don't know how you fund it to start.
So we do have some free cash this year. We could put a little bit in there, but it's not much, you know?
They're just going to need it this year, and so, you know.
And that's the problem, right? If we allocate it early in the season, then it's just essentially they're getting more free cash. We run into that problem. They have, you have to balance the budget at the beginning of the budget season somehow. And then this would be for special situation where, unanticipated halfway through the year, three quarters of the way, they get a new student, and it's going to cost them $200,000, $150,000. This would help them in that situation, but it's still a one-time expense, and you're going to have to make up that money the following year. So there's no easy answer.
Isn't there money that comes back to the town from medical that they can, you could use to fund that for one time?
Yes.
But that comes...
I'm certainly not an expert on this, but they have the circuit breaker. My understanding is the town for students that need a lot of money, say $300,000, $400,000, $200,000 for, where they go out of district. First $50,000 the town absorbs. After that, we get roughly 50% back through the circuit breaker the following year.
So maybe...
So they're getting, I want to think they're getting about $800,000, some thousand dollars this year in circuit breaker money.
So that could be used for stabilization money?
It could. They absorb that already into their budget, you know? They're anticipating those.
So they're already using that to fund their budget?
So is there a course of action you want to put out for us to contemplate? Or is it right before?
I think where we are, where we are, we really need to see what the state numbers are. I think that Chapter 70 number is going to be a big one that's going to kind of give us some direction. So once the governor's budget comes out at the end of this month, I think we'll have a better idea. Otherwise, I think we've done all we can do at this point.
Okay, well, we're working toward the February 20th deadline for the Select Board to submit the budget to the Finance Committee, so we do have some time here. And we're discussing these matters at every one of these meetings. But that's helpful. So it's probably a premature question to say, from what you've discussed tonight, in view of that other meeting, the group that doesn't have a name, the tri-party, thinking what they were talking about, particularly the schools. We're not there anyway, but how close we get to some agreement, that's not yet clear.
I think the Chapter 70 money will be big. And then the board will have to make a decision how much of that Chapter 70 goes to the school. And, or is that thrown in with the split, 54-46% split? I think you can make an argument either way. Over the years, when we've been getting $50,000 in Chapter 70, the town's been absorbing some of that with the split. We haven't been getting money. Now, all of a sudden, you get a big bump in the money. Does the town share in that, or does that go to the school? In order to make things work, I think the school is probably where it's going to have to go this year.
So normally, it would just be the split, the 54-46. But with a larger amount, you're saying that gives us other options to at least contemplate? Whether or not we do, it's another story.
Yep.
Okay. All right. So is that it for tonight? It's a pretty robust report. We thank you. Should we tell them they could read the five-year plan in their spare time?
There is a copy. I've been working with Mr. Brewer. On the five-year plan, it's not up here.
It's in the package.
It's in the package. If you could take a look at it, then just give us your thoughts. If we're heading in the right direction.
Yeah, it's, I think we've tried to line up as many things to save money, and I don't know how many are doable, and it's written, it says that. We don't know how many of these are doable. But there, to look at that and to see what your thoughts are. We welcome any comments about that. It's just Jim and I working together primarily, the town administrator and a member of the Select Board. I guess I must have had some time on my hands over the holidays. But anyway, that's our stab at that, and it was also the five-year capital plan that's in there. Again, look at them as works in progress. Okay. All right. Does that conclude item 3B?
Yes.
So we, next item is the temporary use of the old high school. But this is, wasn't this related to one specific area or not the more general discussion?
Yeah, this is just an update. I did meet with representatives of UMass last week. At this point, it's their opinion that the areas that are available for their use does not, does not work for them. So they are no longer interested in using a building for storage. I think they'd still like to keep in touch with the town in case something else comes up, but at this point, they're not going to go forward with using a building for storage.
Okay, any comments on that? Pretty cut and dry. It was a good attempt and worthy attempt, but that's that. Okay, anything else on that?
Nope, that's it.
All right, you're on a roll, Jim. So now the next item is the town administrator report.
I just wanted to update the board on the new Cannabis Control Commission regulations. Division of Local Services has provided guidance to the towns. There are new regulations in place, Chapter 180 of the Acts of 2022, an act relative to equity in the cannabis industry. The main thing that's going to impact us is community host agreements. I have an email or a request from Town Council to see how that will impact our existing host agreement. But the way this reads is that as of March, those fees and impact fees and so forth will no longer apply. There's some question whether or not, and I think a number of communities are challenging that, saying that they had pre-existing contracts with these companies or these businesses, and those should stand even, you know? They should essentially be grandfathered in because the regulations came in after. But that does not seem to be the way it's going. These regulations, as far as the host agreements, come into effect in March of '24. So the other question I had for Town Council is our existing agreements. Should we be collecting the fees up until March of 2024? And then hopefully, we can collect fees after, but I'm waiting for a response on that.
Is that another way of saying that there was no retroactivity? Because when we talked to Coastal, we talked about the fees being retroactive. They were of the view that that would not be the case, but as I read this, I wasn't sure.
I don't know if anybody's sure at this point.
Okay, all right, I feel better already.
We sat through a seminar on it with Nicole from our KP Law, who worked with us on East Beach, and it's, everybody's just working their way through it right now. They're waiting, I think, for some challenges to see how those go, and they'll make the final determinations.
Okay.
It doesn't look very promising for communities.
Pretty ridiculous.
But does that mean, because the other thing was talking about, we're going to, like, if towns collected the fees, they're going to pay them back?
It's not clear.
KP Law working on that for us, because we got the situation with them. Have they been covering their fees yet?
They haven't paid their fees yet.
Yeah, I was going to say, we haven't.
The only fees they've paid are the ones that go to the state, the state tax, and we've received some revenue from the state on that, but that's it.
We got like $50 grand in sales tax, not millions in sales tax.
KP Law fee changes, just, the fees are going up about 4%, 4.5%. Still seem fairly reasonable.
The five-year plan suggests that we could do a better deal. I guess that's one of the smoke. Yeah, something for, another discussion, but that's, as we go through that painful process, trying to figure out where to save money, we have to look at everything.
Did you skip number two?
Did I skip number, oh, Chapter 90 funding. Yes, I did skip number two. Governor Healy announced a total of $100 million for fiscal year '24 will be allocated to communities for additional funding for Chapter 90. Our share will be $399,162. Chris is aware of that. I think he's already started programming some of those funds into his program.
Is that an increase over prior years?
Yes. So I want to say we get roughly $600,000 to $700,000 a year. This would be an additional $399 this year.
For your books?
What do we get that every year from now on?
50% increase. That's pretty good. So I'd like to add a little bit to that, too. I ran into Senator Rodrick's over the weekend. Because I had seen, I had seen this in the Standard Times, what the other communities got. So, I mean, everybody needs to be aware that Senator Rodrick's was instrumental in getting this, I guess, as it was written in the Standard Times, it was the millionaire's tax. And he was instrumental in getting that $100 million distributed throughout the Commonwealth for transportation infrastructure. I mean, hats off to Senator Rodrick.
Oh, yeah.
Absolutely.
Right.
One of the things that, reading in the Standard Times, was that it can be used for retaining walls. So, I don't know. It might help us on East Beach.
That was in the plans before. They figured it would topple. That was right after putting the tanks in.
Well, there's proven engineers, proven engineer designs. And one thing we got, another thing, you know, not to get off the topic, but Bob Dale on the planning board, he's very knowledgeable in all of these avenues. He's going to be a big benefit to us on that one. That Bob Dale is, while we have him, we need to take advantage.
Ready? Continuing?
So the Infrastructure Oversight Committee, they have their main, big meeting on January 24th, 2024, at the new middle high school.
Stealing our thunder from...
I can let you go. It's all yours.
You're enhancing it there.
Yeah.
So this will be the presentation to the community. They'll be looking for, I think, votes on...
Both options is what we have to vote for. It's actually a meeting, but we'll hold it in a larger place because this room fills up with the businessmen and whatnot and interested residents. So just have it at the high school. It is a meeting, not a forum, where we're going to vote on the action to go forward. There'll be a PowerPoint of the whole process Roger Fainetti's putting together, and we'll have, you know, brief talks, get down to the point, so people are informed.
Okay. I'd put it in my calendar.
Yeah.
Wouldn't you miss it?
We'll let, Steve can still steal some more thunder there, because we got a big meeting tomorrow, right?
Okay.
City Forever.
You're going to check on that, make sure, still time is that on?
I did send an email, 3 o'clock.
Okay, the storm's supposed to come after 4, I think.
I talked, I talked to Danny Aggatt today this morning.
To who?
To Danny Aggatt today. So, so everybody in the board knows, he's the city engineer forever. A lot of people, you know, he lives in Dartmouth and has been on, before the planning board many times. So it's going to be, it's going to be Mayor Coogan. Paul Ferland is also head of the Department of Public Infrastructure for City Forever, and the city engineer, who is also the town, the city planner and conservationator. So this should be, this should be a very good meeting for us.
And it's the update for what our plans are, where we are in the process for Route 6, the water and sewer design, make sure they're on board. We have agreements with them for sewer and water. Both will have to be updated. We also have some old billing that we're still trying to get, you know, finalized. So hopefully, we can bring that up, yeah.
We're having that meeting in this office?
No, in the mayor's office.
All of them for, that would have been good for parking spots.
Going to the big city.
Yes. They're bringing us in.
Jada Communications, I put that in the packet. I think Paul also sent it out with the agenda, just fee increases for their different programming. The other thing I wanted to mention was oppa funding. We're getting close to the Bristol County, it's kind of, I won't say they changed their guidance, but they clarified it, and we have to obligate our Bristol County funding by June. As far as obligate, we have to, they're looking for us to get it under contract by June. It takes four to eight weeks to get a project approved through Bristol County. So we, we need to get our projects in by, nice if we do the end of January, by mid-February the latest. I've talked to her about an extension and I've talked to her about contingency applications and I, I don't have, this is Jane Gonzalez with Bristol County. She is the liaison between the county and the towns and we're still working it out. You know, we, we've been kind of allocating or putting aside a million dollars for the Route Six infrastructure work. Really trying to see if we can make that timing work, but if the timing does not work, we need to have an alternative application in place that we can run with. So we, we can't lose the money. We're not going to lose the money. Also, with the Route Six stuff, while we can go out to bid, they will not finalize or finally approve the application until bottling for the entire project is approved the town needs.
So can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I, I think we should look at if we can, so when you, when, when they say we need a contract, we need a signed contract. I mean, first off, we, we know we're not going to have any of that with the infrastructure stuff because I mean, that was the one task that we were, we were tasked with, with Senator Rodrick's earmark was to get a full completed design, not to worry about how we're going to pay for it, but to get that done. So I don't see that happening on this timeline. So we, we, we need to work in a different direction on what we're going to use that money for. One suggestion that I would like to make, in since we, we, we have the need on that Macumber Loop and I, and I think it's a possibility to, I mean, we have to send this to, to be approved through OPERA, right, on what we're going to use the money for on the signed contract, right?
Yes.
Okay. So what I would like to propose is that million dollars that you're saying we're setting aside for the Route Six project. We go onto the state bid list and purchase a million dollars with the water pipe and pertinences, which would, would give us the opportunity in the spring to start the Macumber Loop and a, and a, like Somerset and Dayton puts out a contract labor, equipment and labor that a lot of small local contractors bid on. And, you know, like if you get a, you're going to own or operate or run the machine, you know, they're able to make some savings that way. Highway can take up on the patch and stuff or something like that. Just, you know, I, I meant to call Chris White from Somerset today because they put out a contract like that every year to get a little bit more specifics on it. And, and I'm pretty sure that, that the suppliers on the, on the bid list, we can just buy that material, ship it right to highway and implement it through highway's program. We could, we could be laying, we could be laying water pipe in the spring for the Macumber Loop with that material. And we can talk with Paul Ferland when we go in the office tomorrow on the City of Forever on this, if that's, if that's a capability. And I, I think it'd get the momentum going on something that we really need, that, that neighborhood. You know, we stopped the pavement in that area because we knew how to do this. Bring in this loop, bring it back out to Route Six and start tying them neighbors in. And the school, I mean, it's going to bring fire protection. It's going to lower their, their, their.
Sure.
Insurance in the houses, you know, fire hydrants there. It's going to loop it back in. It's going to help with our residency tying on the pipe. I mean, I, I think with the scrambling to use the money, it's going to be the best, best option if it can be done.
We should also look into extensions though, tell them the circumstances and see if.
Well, kind of, kind of one of the things on extensions and, and studies and everything that we do, I mean, it's time to act. We know there's a need there.
We'll have, we'll have the town meeting for, before June.
So that'll be April. So we would know in April.
Excuse me, April. Yeah. So we'll have, we, we just might have a signed contract and we'll know the answers.
Yeah. This million dollars is not going to help us. It's going to be jumping a bucket for that signed contract.
Still need it.
Yeah, but we need, we, we got a, we got a current need at the Macumber. They have issues.
So we still have that grant request out, the PFAS grant, which is three point eight million dollars. We, we did get some positive feedback on it. There were no commitments. I don't know if we're going to get it or.
The water pipe won't go bad. You know, and the prices are just going up in that stuff. And, and it's, you know, it can be utilized in all of the routes in the neighborhood. I mean, it can start a program where we put so much footage of water main in a year, like surrounding communities, you know? This increase in, in the chapter ninety money for, for the highway, I mean, that's something that highway can implement.
Okay. Any more on that?
They could do road, they can't do installation with chapter ninety, right? They can do road work.
They can do all the patching.
You want to get together with the first two with utilities?
Again, we can ask these questions to Paul Ferland tomorrow. It's, it's their stuff, you know?
Okay. So that's, that's where we are with OPERA. So I think we're looking to schedule a meeting next week with OPERA.
Okay.
We don't want to lose it.
No.
Yeah, we're not going to lose it.
No.
Well, the goal is to not lose.
I think we have plenty of projects that we could spend it on. We've been kind of.
Yeah, I, I think we just got to prioritize them. I think water, portable water is a priority and fire protection is a priority.
All right.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Any further questions for Jim? If not, we'll move on to approval of minutes. These are the minutes of December the eighteenth. Manny, Paula, whoever.
Yes, I moved.
He was my second.
Motion made in second. Did any discussion on those minutes? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Nobody opposed the animosity. The next one is the report on the bill warrant.
It's not me.
Well, no. No, not this time. On promenade in the ski slopes, right?
You did it too.
Yeah, I did it. I came in one day.
It was going to glow about.
It was, it was exciting. It was exciting. Nothing big, two point three million dollars, I think, which is fairly normal. And nothing jumped out at me and we were on schedule, so it was, it was fun. Okay. The next item is selectmen liaison committee reports and suggestions for future agenda discussion or action items. I'll start with Manny.
I think we kind of covered a lot of that stuff, so.
Yeah, we'll cut back on time. Good. Yeah, I'm about the same. The only thing is we had like bike committee and surplus in between. Bike committee, just everybody knows, we don't accept bikes in the wintertime for the recycling. They've been cleaned out for the winter. We'll start it again in the spring. Talking about the recycling program at the transfer ta, station that shut down for a week. In case you all have a bunch of bikes you were going to bring down this weekend, don't do it. Otherwise than that, we, we've discussed the other issues we've been hot on.
Okay. I have very little to report. The audit committee will be meeting at the end of the month and we're looking at the progress on the audit for fiscal year twenty-three. It's funny because we just finished twenty-two, but that was late in this year. It looks like we're in much better shape. So that's all I have.
Shauna.
There was a meeting of the school building committee. I would like to be, to put on an agenda in an executive session to give this board an update of the executive session on that meeting. So it's not super urgent, but I should have done it. I should have asked for it since we're having an executive session tonight. But if you can see, if you can look on the calendar in the next few meetings, if we're going to have an executive session, I'd like to give this board an update.
We can, we could schedule.
Or we could do that, but it's, it's not a huge, long topic. It's just an update.
But important, obviously.
Yeah.
Yeah. So why don't we, unless we get overwhelmed, I think we're okay on January twenty-second. But you keep track of this closer than I do. Well, if we can do it next time, we'll be fine.
Okay. And then I am planning another internet advisory committee meeting, but not until like, I think, the twenty-fifth.
Okay. All right. Man?
I didn't have any.
Okay. The next item is comments and statements from the public. Ted, anyone make any comments?
The fearless press is here and.
The board's nine is the board's committees, commissions vacancy list and that's still there. I think it's getting smaller.
It's much smaller.
And did you remember how long it used to be when?
I don't know. I used to have to read it.
Yeah, yeah. And anyway, good. So we're getting there. Topic's not reasonably anticipated. This is item number ten, forty-eight dollars. I don't know of any, but I always go to Jim and Paula, none. And then if there's nothing else of regular business, item number eleven is executive session. So pursuant to the provisions of MGL C thirty A, section twenty-one A, the chair declares an open meeting will have a detrimental effect to A, approve an injury on duty status of a police officer, and we'll talk about the name of the person in a minute, and B, to approve minutes of the executive committee minutes of December fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. We will come back into regular session only for the purpose of ending the open meeting. So this would be the roll call vote.
So will Steve Lynn.
Second, Shauna Shufal.
Motion made in second. Did roll call vote Manny?
Manny swears aye.
Aye, Steve Lynn.
Dick Brewer, aye?
Aye, Shauna Shufal.
Aye, Shauna Shufal.
Okay. So we are now in executive session.